Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 20th, 2015 City Council Meeting. A roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Conken.
President.
Alderman Moiseo.
President.
Alderman Beedling.
President.
Alderman Newsom.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Velco.
President.
Alderman Vera.
President. Please stand for invocation and pledge allegiance. Bishop Colburn.
Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you again for another City Council Meeting. We thank you for your blessing. We take nothing for granted. 2014 was a blessing, but we're looking far into 2015 as we run with divisions. Bless our mayor and this council, and we bring jobs into this city. You said in the scriptures, "A man don't work, he shouldn't eat." Blessed in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. One of the legions to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it is very nice to see this many people at the City Council Meeting. I guess controversy brings people out, and before I get started today, I want you to know that community policing is not going to be eliminated. It's going to be retooled, and I've chosen to tell you how we intend to implement the new program. Chief Wallace, will you please come up? Explain how we're revamping this unit?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the community. Let me just start off, just have a few comments. I'd just like to start out by saying, I've gotten a lot of emails from people. Most of them have been very pleasant, asking questions and that, and I appreciate that. We're available over at the chief's office in the police department. At any time anybody wants to call or email, more than happy to talk to you on the phone. May take a minute to get back to you, but we'll get back to you. I'd like to start by just saying, talking to the mayor, members of the council, obviously you folks are here, we're very happy and pleased with the work, the work, the relationships made and the successes that have come out of the Neighborhood Policing Unit and our Community Services Division as we have now. I would like to speak to the fact that the successes are directly attributed to the work and the response from the community to our programs. We provided the opportunities, and you folks responded, whether it was coming to meetings, calling the police department, supporting our officers, calling our 911, or when you saw stuff in your own areas. That's the kind of behavior that the Neighborhood Watch programs at the police department wants to bring to people, and like I said, everybody's responded. We've gone from a point where we were at 22 and up to almost 50 active groups now. Very proud to see, especially as the police chief, and having our officers and that kind of support from our community, and many of you folks by being here tonight to support the success of that program. Unfortunately, where it brings us today is financially, it's difficult for us financially. Through the last year, we have a program instituted, what we call the PADDLE, and PADDLE was always designed to take officers that were in specialty divisions and fill them back in to the road, which is our main mission. When you pick up the phone and dial 911 or non-emergency, you'd like an officer to get there fast. We have a certain amount of officers that we use on the road, and when officers are injured, long-term injuries, which we do have right now, five, potentially six officers that are seven to 12 months out from returning, it eats into what we have on the road. So what we do is we take officers from other divisions and bring them in to serve in those positions. Now, the officers do it, and sometimes they do it, they're not exactly happy when that happens, but you know what? They do it, they step up and they take it on. It was always designed to be like a stopgap. Unfortunately, the stopgap has become an everyday thing, three, four officers, which takes them away from their other missions, which are, you know, working in the neighborhoods and things like that. Let's see what, you know, one of the things that we only have a certain amount of money that we have to run the police department with. One of my goals is to make sure we are fiscally responsible. Everybody back in the late summer saw the talk about the building and what kind of condition it's in. This is where the money comes to pay for those things, and when we're filling in slots on the road with overtime, hiring back officers for overtime, it's one of the few things that we can actually try to control. The other issue we're having right now is vehicles. We're at a position where originally, last year, we budgeted to buy a certain amount of vehicles, and that was almost, that was knocked down by quite a few based on the fact of our overtime. The money has to come from somewhere, and when we're only afforded so much, that's where we have to go with it. Our budget's between 94% to 96% in salary and benefits. The other 4% to 5% is for such things as our paper, our vehicles, our vehicle maintenance, gasoline. So we have to stretch it and try to get it where it's going. One of the things that we're going to do with these officers, who I'm, I want to make it known, and the mayor and I have talked about this, actually, this is something we've been talking about for 18 months. It's just come to that point with a few months left in our fiscal year, that it has become necessary to return our officers to the road at this time. I don't like to look at it as dissolving the unit, more of a matter of, kind of suspending operation at this time, but with the response that everybody has at Neighborhood Watch, our Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, our Citizen Police Academies, the duties that are currently being done there will be handled more or less by a couple of officers or an officer, actually, until we can do that. Some of you have written to me about our sex offender registry program. That officer's not going anywhere, other than that officer's now, instead of reporting to Community Services, is going to report to the Detective Bureau. We have an officer in housing. That officer also is going to report to the Detective Bureau. What's going to happen with the officers that leave this unit currently? And I will tell you, we have five officers who, as of February 2nd, will be released to solo patrol, then went through the academy. The problem we have in a police department when you try to build is we hired eight. I want to say this group was hired in maybe July. I have five of them left. They made their choices to go other places. One said that the officer reported me that it wasn't suitable for policing. It wasn't what the officer thought it was going to be and left. And that's what happens sometimes. We're at about a 66% rate of people we hire to people we stay. Sometimes I ask them to leave, and, but the majority of time they leave on their own. So when you're trying to build, people leave a lot quicker than people come, and it's just where we face ourselves. So anyways, roughly of that five added with the officers who will be leaving MPU for the time being, eight to 10 will go to the road, three to five roughly to the Detective Bureau, at some point, hope to reboot community policing, neighborhood policing, and possibly traffic, obviously. I mentioned one officer will stay to assist programs and registry and housing back to the Investigations Bureau. I want to tell you, it wasn't easy when we started the program three years ago. We're at a razor-thin with the amount of officers we have. There's a certain amount that you have to have on the road, and you have to account for vacations, people getting sick, long-term injuries. So what you see on the road is usually, you know, if we need, let's just say we need 10 officers to staff a shift, we have to prepare to have 17 in that position, and we're not at that position. It's low what I'm giving you. The night numbers are obviously a lot higher, but it just rises proportionately. Many of you have questions? I'm always happy to answer them. I will stay around after tonight's council meeting. I'll be more than happy to answer for you. I kind of blazed through the stuff I had here, but I wanted you to get a picture of what we're looking at. Not an easy decision. Very proud of the work, whether it was the meetings, the phone calls, the watch groups linking up to help us arrest offenders. We had some success, a lot of successes with that. The volunteer programs that the unit did. All very proud of the work. However, we're at a point where financially, it just doesn't work out for us right now, and that's where we're at. I'll be around after we're done to answer any questions anybody might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. A month and a half ago, I made a commitment to this community, and the commitment was to not raise taxes. I talked to the aldermen, we agreed we wouldn't raise taxes. You had to realize that I had to make cuts. I've made those cuts. I came from community policing, I was a community policing officer. I know what happens there. I know how vital it is, but I'm telling you right now, financially, we cannot afford that unit. Those officers will be placed on the street. I'm going to try to make sure that every one of those officers is still a community police officer, and they will, when a meeting comes for, a meeting, they will attend that meeting, they will respond from their duties and go to the community policing meeting or a meeting in your neighborhoods, Neighborhood Watch meetings. The officer that's assigned that shift and that area will come to those meetings, excused from his normal duties during that period of time. I can afford to lose an officer for an hour or two. I can't afford to lose an hour for 12, an officer for 12 hours. So, if you're mad at anyone, be mad at me, because I made a choice not to raise your taxes and to utilize the officers we have on the shift more efficiently and effectively. There is a hiring freeze in the city of Waukegan. No one will be hired. We're cutting the budget substantially. When this budget comes in, it will be balanced, and we will make Waukegan work. I know there's some rough roads ahead. I, like the chief said, I didn't just do this yesterday, ladies and gentlemen. I talked about this 18 months ago, because I knew it's important for me, coming from that environment and spending 27 years of my life as a policeman, to know that at 2:00 in the morning, when I'm calling for help, we have enough men to staff that shift, men and women, to staff that shift. We are hiring back now, three to four officers every day, seven days a week. It's costing us substantial dollars where we could just more effectively put these officers back on the shift, let them do community policing when they can. Ultimately, my goal is this. My goal is to make every Waukegan police officer a community police officer. When I was on the road, I walked the projects. Every day, when I was on the road, I would get out of my squad car, and I'd walk the projects on the south side, every day. We want officers to know what the neighborhoods are like. I think it's a great program. This is a matter for me of financial responsibility, and like I said, I will assume full responsibility for what is going to occur. So, if there are any questions, I also will be here after, afterwards, to discuss them with you. Chief Wallace and I will, anything you need to ask us or talk about, we will certainly do that, but understand, this is a matter of necessity. Thank you. Minutes, motion to approve the, I'm sorry, audience time. Pierre Robinson, please, 1018 Newman Street.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, my name is Pierre Robinson. I'm a lifelong resident, born and raised here in Waukegan. I'm also outreach director at Waukegan Community Church. We are, our Neighborhood Watch group started about four years ago after the shooting death of a 29-year-old mother on Walnut Street, and as a result of that, a symbiotic relationship consisted of the Waukegan Police Department, the 5th Ward Alderwoman, Edith Newsom, and also our church and our community landlords. And the impact of the partnership has been tremendous over four years. Our landlords have a better relationship with the tenants, our church has a better relationship with the landlords, the residents, and also the Waukegan Police Department. And also, the impact has been a dramatic decrease in crime. In that particular vicinity, that was a hotspot for drug dealing and crime, as all of you know. And so what I was trying to say, basically, is that we need to keep that intact. Commander Joe Florp, Officer Kelly Gordon, also Lieutenant Kelly Corr have been intricate in developing those relationships, and the perception from the community has been a lot better, given the racial climate and the stigma that's attached to the police department and also our justice system here around the nation. I think it's something that you may want to invest in instead of to take from, given the climate in our communities around the country. And I think that that police, community policing unit was doing a great job in relating to the community where they weren't evasive as they used to be in the past. And the perception of the police department has steadily increased amongst residents where they're feeling a little bit more willing to come to the police officers, to tell them about situations that are happening. So I, and I think I speak on behalf of the landlords, and they'll probably get up and say something themselves from their perspective, but I just wanted to say that we need to keep that intact, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. John Belmonte, John Belmonte.
Your Honor.
Thank you.
Your Honor, as all those who come to the podium, I think we should remind them about our three-minute rule, so there's no...
They do.
Okay.
You have, you have three minutes, sir.
Yeah.
Proceed, please.
Well, pretty much of what I was going to say has already been covered, but what I like about the program is having your own individual officers that are calling downtown to the police station or having forbid 911, and I always looked at it as an excellent step towards communication and bonding with the community. When you have the same person you deal with all the time, you know, it's a lot easier, and you'll probably get more information. And I'm definitely in favor of keeping it intact to the greatest extent possible, you know, the phone numbers and everything else, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ray Peterson, 316 West Sherman, please.
I've lived in this town my whole life. Was born here, raised here. You guys got your hands full. This town's, we're not doing good budget-wise. Last thing I want to see is my Neighborhood Policing community cut. Now, the one thing I've always learned, that my father told me, is that my best can always be better. Well, I'm asking you that you're doing the best you can, but I think you can do better. We need to figure out a way to keep the Neighborhood Policing program, even if we lose it for a short period of time, let me keep my ward officer. I've never found someone more dedicated, all of them, they all live in this town. Everyone that's in the community policing program actually lives in this town and cares about this town, not taking nothing away from the patrolmen or anything like that. Those are the kind of people you want. Those are the people you guys should be proud of, that you have working for you in this city, doing something every day. Now, I know we're tied on budget constraints, and I'm sure, I've heard rumored that, you know, the patrolmen are working without a contract for the last two years. You're saying right now, we're losing it and we're going to get it back. Well, in two years, when you're faced with another problem, I don't see us getting it back. The citizens are always the ones that have to give when it comes to something city services-wise, whether it be public works or policing or anything. I'm asking you for this one thing, give it back to us. This is the one thing that we need. It helps our community, it gives us relationship, it's the only voice we have with the city. Now, I know everybody says we can call the police chief and the mayor and our alderman. Ms. Newsom's excellent about calling me back. She laughs at me when I call her, but it's all in good fun. I just think that everybody here obviously wants this one service. Now, I know you said you didn't want to raise taxes, and I applaud you for that, but the financial problems that we're in are not the citizens' fault all the time. I think sometimes there's some spigula spending on things that we don't need to have. And if that be the case, you know, I hate to say this, but if it's going to stay like this, I never thought that I would ever want to leave this town, especially after being here for 37 years. I'm about ready to get some boxes, because it's not looking good, and I can't sell it. So I'm glad the town, I'm glad that Public Works has got an excavator to tear it down, because that's probably about the only thing that's going to happen to my house, because I can't stay. It's getting too expensive to stay here, and I'm doing a good job of keeping the crime out of my street with the help of the neighborhood community, but I don't think it's going to stay that way by losing this program. I'm just asking you, please, I think you can do better.
Thank you, sir. Sir, to your point, the policemen haven't had a contract for two years by choice. They had two opportunities to sign contracts, and they walked away from the table, so let's not hold that against the city. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jane Ferry, Waukegan Main Street Executive Director, and it's nice to see this many people at City Council. I love it. Waukegan Main Street's Mardi Gras is fast approaching. It is February 7th at Glen Flora Country Club. All are welcome. Information is available at waukeganmainstreet.org/mardigras. The event supports much of the work going on in the downtown, the harbor, and the lakefront. And I just want to say thank you to Alderman Velco and May for your donations to the silent auction already. Appreciate that. Mr. Bennie is opening at Clockwise Theater on January 29th. This is a one-man show on one of Waukegan's favorite sons, Benny Kabalski or Jack Bennie. The show runs Thursdays through Sundays until February 15th. Clockwise said this is the fastest-selling show that they have ever put on, so please get your tickets soon. Three Brothers Theater just announced their 2015 season, and they're kicking it off with a complete history of America abridged. It starts on February 6th and it runs through the 21st. Tickets are also available now. The Genesee is adding shows all the time. We should be so proud of the Genesee Theater. The next show is Dan Plus Shay this Friday. It's a country duo. Check out thegeneseetheater.com for a full listing of everything else that's going on down there. Seventeen North is celebrating two years in business this week, and they're giving you the gift of a free lunch. Buy one, get one free, so go down there and wish Tom and his gang much success. The Yacht Club is trying new things. They just had a brunch last Sunday, their first harborside brunch, sweeping views of our beautiful lake and our beautiful harbor. Please go down and support them. And they are having comedy night this Friday, January 23rd, so tickets are available through the Yacht Club, 847-623-4188. And I just want to add that Waukegan Main Street has been in favor of the Neighborhood Policing Initiative for a very long time. It's nice to be able to go out onto the street and shake hands with the officers and see the same people day after day and night after night, since I do spend a lot of time downtown. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me at my office, which is 847-623-6650, or check out our information at waukeganmainstreet.org. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Ferry. Cecil Hooker.
Cecile.
Was it?
Cecile.
Cecile, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Cecile Hooker. Speaking in regards to keeping the Neighborhood Watch program intact, because I am a landlord on Walnut Street and Edwards, and I can go back even further than the four years, and I can recall the problems that we had back then. And for you guys to eliminate, and I understand, Mayor, you know, you say this for budget cuts, but it was horrible on Walnut Street. I lived in one of my apartments. I know how many times the police had to come in there. I know the crime, I know the problems that we had over there, and to be honest, I'm really afraid. I'm scared that if this program stops, that it's just going to go back to what it used to be. And I have a lot invested, and I can't afford to lose right now with the economy being the way it is, and that if you take this program away, I really don't know what's going to happen. And Pierre said it, you know, everything that I really wanted to say, but I really think that if you take this away, it's going to go back to what it used to be. The crime rate is going to go back up, and we landlords won't be able to rent our properties out. We've got a lot invested, and I really think that this situation is not a good choice. So, I wish you could cut something else and let us keep this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hooker. Mr. Sharif, 474 Walnut.
Good evening, everybody. I am the landlord of 747 Walnut, and I recently had a break-in last month with the police. So, this shows the importance of keeping this Neighborhood Watch intact. Just repeating what everybody else said, please, by our humble request, is to keep this Neighborhood Watch program intact. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Liz Echeverria, 601 North Sheridan Road.
Hello, my name is Liz Echeverria, and I live at 601 North Sheridan Road. I'm a captain in the 6th Ward, and I'm here to show my support for the Neighborhood Policing Units. In the short amount of time that I've been captain, I've been very impressed with how Officer Luca has taken the time to personally keep us informed via emails and phone calls. She provides us with information how not to be an easy target when there's a string of break-ins. She keeps us updated if there are any sex offenders in our neighborhood and answers any questions or concerns we may have. Having a Neighborhood Officer gives us an overall sense of ease and comfort, especially if we need them in a crisis situation. I started our Neighborhood Watch Group about six months ago, and in that short amount of the time, the officers have provided us with contacts, skills, and information on how to be more proactive and involved in our community. We rely on these officers' continued guidance and support in order for us to stay informed and involved. We need this program. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ann Ripple, 627 North County. Ann, are you here?
I...
R-I-P-P-E-L.
Yeah. No, I don't hear anything. I just think we should keep the program.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McFagan, 1270 South Elder Avenue.
Hi, I'm the block captain in Pleasant Hill, Ward 9, and I'm urging you not to disband the Neighborhood Policing Division. You have built a program that has the citizens behind you. We are working together to make sure that Waukegan is a safe place to live. This program has brought our neighborhood together to help each other and look out for one another. It is another set of eyes and ears to help the police make this town safer. Why do you want to take this away? I feel this program has brought the neighborhood and police together to solve the problems without all the issues involved with the non-emergency number. We know we can call Officer Hasso or Lieutenant Kelly and get our answers or get something done. I feel many issues have been solved because of the Neighborhood Policing Unit and the Neighborhood Watch Groups. You have us looking out so we can get these issues taken care of before they get out of hand. I urge you not to get rid of the program. If you want Waukegan to be a better place, you need to start with this type of program. You have built a rapport between the citizens and the police department, and now you want to take it away. This program makes sense and in the long run makes our town safer. Please reconsider your decision to get rid of this valuable resource. We realize we can still have our Neighborhood Watch Group, but you need to understand, it will not be the same. The police are an essential part of this program working. If you take it away, it will not work the same way.
Thank you, ma'am. Sue at 624 North Genesee. Nothing to say? Thank you, ma'am. Alvin Scott, 408 Fourth Street.
Good evening. My name is Alvin Scott. I'm at 408 Fourth Street. Alderman Tempest is a very good friend of mine. I, last summer, we had a big problem on my street. I got with Alderman Tempest, and I got with Officer Luca, and they resolved it. And I was doing numerous calls down to the police station for drive-bys and stuff like that, and the cops came and they drove by, you know? So, I think we should keep this program. It's successful. I feel good about it. I'm the, I started a Neighborhood Watch, and it's very successful. We had a good turnout, and I think we should keep it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tracy Hughes, 2055 Delaware.
Good evening. I live at 2055 Delaware Road in the 5th Ward. My husband Kevin and I are block captains of our Neighborhood Watch Group. We started our group in 2012 after our home was burglarized. With each Neighborhood Watch meeting that we had, our group was growing with members as more and more neighbors were getting involved. I would just like to say for the record, as a resident and taxpayer of this city, I feel it is vital that we keep the Neighborhood Policing Units in our wards, and I ask you, please, to reconsider your decision for the sake of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Josephine Stewart, 2213 Marshall Parkway.
Hello. My name is Josephine Stewart. I'm the sixth, I'm the captain of the Marshall Parkway Neighborhood Watch Program, and I have been with it practically since the start, and I have a short statement. I have been involved in the Neighborhood Watch Program almost since the start of it. What I have seen the program do in my neighborhood has given our citizens, a police officer, Angela Gay, to be on a close basis with all of us, to ask questions of her if we needed it and to get answers, and it has given us a personal, it has given us a person to call when we need something checked out, if we saw something suspicious. Yes, if something needed immediate attention, we would call 911 or the emergency line, but we still have that option of a personal interaction which gave us a sense of family working together. And as some of us have grown to think of our officers as family, they would be truly missed. My neighborhood has had a few problems recently, but the program got the problem fixed. At a time when our courageous men and women of blue are being harassed and con... A program that has helped and is helping the community. A program that is helping people get off the streets if they can, that has programs like cleaning up the lakefront to get community involved in their city, or doing the fine job of Food for the Needy collections for the food pantry at holiday times, which is helping showing people that our men and women in blue are people too. I saw on TV an activist who was setting up protests, and the police challenged him to a training program for him to see how he would react in the same scenarios that they were being condemned for. Well, he got his eyes open because he reacted in the same case, the same way the police reacted, and he got a whole different understanding. I think it's something that could be done to help the activists in understanding and communicating it to the public, which I think, God willing, will help interactions. Instead of saying we don't have the grant money anymore, look for other grants or funds that the government should have in place since they want these programs started. Please don't give up on this program and the wonderful officers we are doing, who are doing such a great, caring job. It takes special people to do what our police officers are doing day-to-day, being out there, taking care of all of us. Do all you can to keep it going and show the world that what Waukegan is doing right. God bless all the wonderful men and women in blue. I stand with them. And one more thing, I got a call today from a woman who could not be here but wanted me to say for her that if we need money to help keep the program going, she can tell you where to give tickets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman. My name's Ron Osterlin. I'm the executive director for the Waukegan Chamber, and I just wanted to mention a couple of events that we have upcoming and also recognize some of the great collaboration that is going on within the city. Our next-up event is our second Thursday of the month at Classic Toyota. It's February twelfth from five to seven, and you guys are all invited. Just let us know you're coming. Last year, we had our first annual bike race in downtown Waukegan. We had a lot of partnerships to make that happen. It was the, Vista was our title sponsor, and we call it the Vista Health, Vista's Health System Waukegan Criterion. I know it's a long mouthful, and we're probably gonna shorten it this year. We're in the planning stages of it for this year in July, and we really look forward to it. It's a, it's a great summer event. It brings a lot of visitors. There's literally pros from all around the world that come to it and race amateurs also. We had the amateurs signing in at the Genesee, or anyone, actually, all the riders were signing in at the Genesee, and a lot of the remarks were always, wow, had no idea that this theater was here and just really quite amazed at it. I also wanted to give special thanks to everyone that put all their hard time into making this happen. Thanks, Main Street, for helping. The Public Works Department was fantastic. The Police Department we had was fantastic. We had a hundred and forty-five volunteers that we just obviously couldn't do it without them. It was a huge event, and really just want to thank everyone, and again, thanking Vista to be the title sponsor. So the main reason I'm here tonight is just for, to give a token of our appreciation. We wanted to give a signed and autographed, or a signed and framed jersey. It's been signed by all the, is it signed by all the pro riders?
Winners.
All the pro winners, yeah. And then this is Mark Colbert. He's the race director from Prairie State Cycling Series, and so what's kind of interesting from the pro riders, there was actually fifty percent of the pro riders, from the women and men, were from out of the country. There was Canadian, Australian, and New Zealand riders were first, second, and third. Fifty percent of those were outside. So it was, it was an international event. It was quite exciting. And yeah. So I'd like to present it to Mayor Motley on behalf of the City of Waukegan.
Ladies and gentlemen, this event is a bicycle race. It is awesome. Last year was our first year. This is our second year. It's bigger and bigger. What this group does, they, the following weekend, or the following Saturday, they have the same event in Lake Bluff. It draws thousands of people. Last year, we had five thousand people. Last year downtown, we had a couple hundred.
Spectators.
Spectators. And it was a great event. I'm not a bicyclist, so, but I did enjoy it, and I think you probably do, too. So when you have the opportunity, please participate, go take a look at it, and you'll see a lot of very fit men and women. I don't belong in that group. Thanks. See you back.
Thank you. Again, just really want to thank all the different people that were involved. It was a big event and a lot of collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Simon Hughes, ten-fourteen Edwards.
I'm interested in the Neighborhood Watch issue. I want to let you know I do thoroughly applaud your not raising the taxes. It's nice to hear someone say that, but I'm not quite sure this is the way to do it. I've been a property owner and a landlord in the city for about seventeen years, and I have seen dramatic changes as a result of the Neighborhood Policing. When I first started landlording here, my experience was that I would get break-ins in a basement. I could call the police department, and they'd say, we'll send somebody around, wait for us. Eight hours later, a policeman finally turned up. I would tell him there'd been a break-in, and he'd say, well, it's just a break-in. What do you expect me to do about it? That was the basic attitude. If I had people calling me looking for somewhere to live, they'd say, what's the address? I'd say, it's Edwards Street. They'd say, oh, not that area. That's terrible. I'm not interested. And that would be the end of the conversation. As a direct result of the work done by the Neighborhood Watch Group and by Edie Newsom, I've had people now call me up and say, this is a nice area. I'd like to live there. That is a night-and-day difference, and it's due directly, I think, to both the Alderman and the Neighborhood Watch policemen. They've turned up repeatedly to do stuff even on their own time, not just when they're being paid, and they have transformed the attitude in the area to the police department. The attitude used to be that the police were the enemy. Now I have tenants talk to me and say, we want to call the police, we want to talk to them about this because there's a problem. So the Neighborhood Policing Initiative has made allies out of the neighborhood instead of a confrontational situation. I have a strong feeling that if it's withdrawn, then it will be a bad economic decision because the cost of dealing with the neighborhood problems may get higher, not lower. Right now, what we see is that if buildings are being rehabbed, then there are typically break-ins while the buildings are vacant. So I'm left to the feeling that while the neighborhood has improved substantially, there is still problems just below the surface that could resurface if that policing is withdrawn. And I think the net result might be a significant increase in policing costs, not a cost-saving. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Janice, seven-oh-four Walnut.
I'm a little bit short. Hello? I'm here. My name is Janice Sue. I'm here. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to speak. I do understand your concern for not raising our taxes. I appreciate that as a taxpayer in your area. However, when I bought the building that I live in, or that I rent to right now as a landlord, back in oh-nine, oh, and twenty-ten, it was not a good area. It was very, very, very difficult to go there, especially at night, and we had break-ins galore. It was not a safe area. I wouldn't live there. I wouldn't even recommend people living there, and that's the reason why we formed our Neighborhood Watch Group with Edith, with Pierre, with the Police Department, specifically Joe and, you know, Commander Joe, Joseph, and Lieutenant Kelly, Corey Kelly. And because of them, our neighborhood has changed. Our neighborhood has been desirable for the first time. And when we call and we need help from the police, we're calling somebody that cares about our area. Before we had this watch, or before we had this kind of integral relationship with the police, we would call the police, and any random police officer would come. They didn't have the same heart. They didn't care about our area as much. That's why I think I'm here to ask you to reconsider, because I feel that the Neighborhood Watch, the Community Watch from the Police Department, is an asset, not a liability, and not an expense. And what I'm concerned about is that if we don't reconsider it, we're gonna lose investors to come into the area, good landlords that actually care about the area, to come and rehab these buildings. We have vacant buildings right now on Walnut and Linden and Edwards, and the only way for us to attract better investors, better landlords, is to show them that it's a great area to invest, not an area that they're afraid of because there's no return on money. And I understand the concept of money, because if we can't get the return on money, we're all gonna leave. It's not gonna be a good place for us. So I'm just here speaking from my heart, sharing you my concern if we don't work as close as possible with our police, with our police force. Thank you.
Bruce Birch.
My name is Bruce Birch. I'd like to thank the mayor and the chief for the opening comments made tonight about the Community Policing Program. As a, as a longtime owner of property in the city of Waukegan, I think that the Neighborhood Policing Program has done tremendous things to improve the image and improve the quality of life in many of the neighborhoods throughout the city. And in our neighborhood in particular, the, it's been basically a night-and-day difference compared to just a number of years ago. So on behalf of our organization and the Walnut, Linden, Edwards area, we look forward to trying to work with the city to look for ways to make the best of a difficult situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pat Stykes, twenty-four thirty-one North Lewis.
I'm here, I'm Pat Stykes, and I live at twenty-four thirty-one North Lewis. I'm here tonight to speak about the importance of the Neighborhood Policing Unit. In my little corner of Waukegan, our Neighborhood Policing Officer, Laney Newman, has facilitated in relieving traffic congestion at Little Fort School, cleaning up Harbor Lake's apartments, and convincing them to have onsite security, which makes a world of difference in my neighborhood. And also, she fosters good and friendly police-citizen relationships. In today's inquiry, in today's climate of such backlash on the police officers, this is a problem we should cultivate, not terminate. This, in order, these officers are so important, and I realize that it is a financial issue. I really do realize that. But also, the Neighborhood Policing Unit has worked a thousand hours that would have been overtime for other officers and saved this, this town sixty thousand dollars since September. So I'm asking you today to keep this program, cultivate this program that we get such a bang for our buck on. And please, Mr. Mayor, listen to the people who put you here and keep this unit intact. Thank you.
Teresa Hansen, fourteen thirty-two. I know where it's at.
Fourteen thirty-two Alexander Court. Born and raised in the city of Waukegan, have no intentions of leaving anytime soon. I know a majority of you guys, and I know that you are elected to represent the people of Waukegan. This is a small portion of the people of Waukegan, and they're all asking you for a program that is working in the community. So to give it up without even asking your constituents and your citizens what they think of it is absurd. I thank you for not raising my taxes, but my taxes just went down, and it's because my property value went down. I would like my property value to go up, and with programs like this, it keeps the community intact, it keeps the crime rate down, and that way, my property value will go back up. And if you want to raise my taxes for a program like this, I'm all for a tax increase. I'll pay more money to support a program like this. I don't have a problem with that as a taxpayer.
Chris Blanks, four-oh-nine Oak.
Just come here to inform you all that on this coming Thursday, the twenty-second, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind will be hosting the Waukegan Sixtieth District, the Sixtieth of our school district, at our facility at eight-oh-one McAllister Avenue, to discuss educational issues and concerns, which we have brought before the school board, in the area of diversity, and in the areas of diversity and other educational concerns. So that'll be at six P.M. at eight-oh-one McAllister Avenue. And that's pretty much it. If anybody have any questions regarding this Thursday, they can reach us at seven-seven-three-five-one-zero-seventeen-thirteen. Also, right quick, I've heard some of you, Alderman, mention your concerns regarding littering in the community, and nothing breeds litter more than bus stops. So I would suggest that in your considering challenging your issues of littering, I remember that the Pace Bus Director came here and wrote a pretty decent check. So perhaps you might consider getting some cans or some trash cans at each one of your bus stops, because when people standing, they're throwing paper down, and definitely consider one right there at the corner, or can right there at the corner of Eighth and McAllister. So take those things into consideration. Thank you all for your time and your attention.
Justice, Justice Morgan, twelve, I'm sorry, one-twenty-four Harding Avenue.
Justice Morgan, one-two-four Harding Avenue here in Waukegan. Basically, what I wanted to say is in the email I sent to you last week, Mayor, I gave you an excerpt from the FBI's Joint Task Force Manual on how to properly put in community policing, and how effective you can make it be. I understand that, you know, with the officers, there's everything, long-term injuries, budget cuts, and so having the office... Instead of having the officers be in there maybe 12 hours a day, four days a week, have them in there maybe 10 hours a week. They build the relationships with the business owners, with the landowners, with the people. If you take away entirely, the relationships that they have built, were built for nothing. And to bring it back in a couple months will only make things worse. With the things that have been going on across the country, we need the cops in the areas that have maybe high crime rates to build the relationships. Instead of having random officers on patrol responding to these different locations, you can reduce crime and have better relationships and better, and lower crime rate in the city by having the cops build the relationships with the citizens and the business owners. When I was in school, in middle school, Jack Benny, Officer Luca, and Officer Drugstore ran there. It's worked in the schools by them building relationships with the kids, and in turn, it's helped solve crime in the schools. If it's worked in the schools, it can work in the community, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Dulce Ortiz, 10 South Sharon Candy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dulce Candy Ortiz. And, you know, as I said, trying to do research on statistics of, about how effective the Waukegan Neighborhood Policing Program is, you know, in order to plead my case to the Mayor and the Aldermen, I found myself finding, like, outdated statistics from other states and other cities. But then I realized I don't need to look at any other state or other city for statistics as my mother's home is part of the successful, the successful rate of the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Policing Program. Approximately two years ago, my mom's neighborhood in the 3rd Ward had been affected by a string of robberies. I had seen the information in Alderman Lisa's May's Facebook page about this program with the Neighborhood Policing Program. And even though I saw it, I really, it wasn't really a priority for me, not until another home was broken into in the middle of the day a few months later. I immediately contacted the Lieutenant in Charge of the Program, and I had the pleasure in meeting with then-Lieutenant Joe Florip, Sergeant Corey Kelly, and our Neighborhood Policing Officer Andy White. I became a Neighborhood Watch Captain for the area where my mom lives. And now Commander Florip, Lieutenant Kelly, and Officer White were instrumental in guiding me and our neighbors in order to keep our neighborhood safe and alert. They were more than ready to attend our meetings and gave us very valuable information. The Waukegan Neighborhood Policing Program extended its programming to not only educate our neighbors, but to also get them vested in the city we live in through various community events and volunteer opportunities such as collecting food for the Cool Food Pantry, volunteering to be bell ringers for the Salvation Army during the holidays, participating in Child Safety Days, neighborhood cleanups, municipal beach cleanups, and National Night Out, just to name a few. Most importantly, they also coordinated the Waukegan Citizens Police Academy where I truly learned to appreciate our police officers even more and saw them in a different light. My mother's home has not been broken into, and to my knowledge, there have more, there have not been any more incidents of burglaries since we started our Neighborhood Watch. And those are my statistics. There are really no words that I can say or that I can find to say how thankful and grateful I am for this program. I do not live with my mother, but having peace of mind that our, the neighborhood is safe and that it has a Neighborhood Watch is priceless. Our city, our community needs the Neighborhood Watch, Neighborhood Policing Program. It has helped make a positive impact on reducing neighborhood crime. It reduces the fear of crime and enhances the quality of life in the community and that of our residents. We elected you to represent us and advocate for our needs and the needs of our community.
That's, that's true, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your comments. I would hope that you would stay to hear a comment from Alderman Valco, who ran a unit like this for many, many years. We have different perspectives on what you're talking about. I can tell you, I worked the unit. I know exactly how it works and how it doesn't work. And please stay around and listen to some of the other comments. Okay, that being said, motion to approve the regulations of January 5th, 2015. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moiseo. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passes. Community reports, Finance Committee, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening. One item on the agenda, to authorize the City Collector to issue a request for proposal for a third-party collection service. And what this is, Mayor, is we had a contract with a, with a company from 2010 to 2013. The contract ran out. We have them this year, under no contract, and this collection agency does our parking tickets, the past water bills. So the Collector is requesting an RFP for a contract for next year, and that's what this is. So the Finance Committee recommended, and I so moved, that the City Collector issue a request for proposal for a third-party collection service.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Valco. Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham.
Thank you, Your Honor. Insurance Committee met roughly about 6:20. One item on the agenda. Authorize proper city officials to settle Police Department workers' compensation claim. Claim number WC 201-285-6554. Amount not exceed $46,478 and 10 cents. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Next item, Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, authorize the proper city officials to execute the intergovernmental agreement and the quick claim deed as offered by the county. The agreement is regarding the county disconnect Kennedy Drive from Oak Plain Road. The quick claim deed is to facilitate the property for the extension of Forest Avenue and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Item B, raffle, approved raffle sales application for Ducks Unlimited. Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item D, approval of annual miserable quarter Jelly Bean Candy Days fundraiser for April 14th and 15th, 2015. Motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Rivera. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Thank you, Your Honor. As mentioned before, we talked about better relationships, or building better relationships with our police force. I had an opportunity to speak with the President of the Lake County and double ACP, myself, and looks like we have a date set where we're gonna be hosting a, I wanna call it Straight Talk, how to interact with police. This date is set for February the 7th. The hours are 1:00 to 3:00 PM. The location will be at Waukegan City Hall. Our goal is to have on this panel, if you wanna call it that, police officers, not our chief or your commander, but the actual police officer, your neighborhood police officer, the actual patrol. These are the individuals who interact on a daily basis with our public. Attorneys, votes, your, someone from the State's Attorney's Office, Public Defender's Office, practicing attorneys. We're in the process of getting those names together. But the important thing is, and I think as it was said tonight, is to build better relationships and a better understanding of what is appropriate or acceptable when interacting with police. A lot of us have our own opinion of what we can and cannot do, what we should and should not be doing. But the most important thing is understanding and know, knowing how to properly interact with our frontline police officers. And in the same token, is how to respond in the event that the appropriate action wasn't taken. But what cannot happen, I'm a firm believer in this, and I believe this at the bottom of my heart, that actions cannot be taken out on the streets. They cannot be. But as we move forward in our society, and I specifically speak of Waukegan, I believe, given intelligent people the right information, they'll respond in an intelligent way. But when people do not know the correct way to respond or to interact, then they take it upon themselves to find their own way of doing it, and this is where problems happen. So I hope that this audience today, a great segue for me to put it out there, that all of you would, if not attend, would tell your neighbor, I know I'm gonna do everything I can humanly possible to make sure as many of our young men and our young women come here and listen to Straight Talk. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. As we've all heard tonight, we've heard a number of people come up and talk about the Neighborhood Policing Unit, obviously all of it's positive. And I can't heap more praise on the people that are running that program and are involved in that program than you have tonight. More than satisfied with the officer that I have working for me in the 2nd Ward, Officer Bagay. She's done an outstanding job. We had some problems in the 2nd Ward over last summer. We had some break-ins. And between the Neighborhood Watches and the community policing organizations, those individuals were caught. So I can't praise them enough. However, in that same situation, I think that we have to look forward, and unfortunately with budget situations and constraints, the Mayor and the Chief have worked things out, and I think we have to go forward and see how it's gonna work out. And hopefully, we can bring them back full-time sometime in the future. That's my hope anyways, so like I say, I think they do a great job. But at this point, I think with them being integrated on the road, it might even work out a little bit better. They'll be working on the road. You might not get your same police officer, but you should get one of the Neighborhood Policing Officers come to any situation or involved with what was formerly the, their strict responsibility. So, thank you. Have a good day.
Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you. Neighborhood policing, and when people want change, usually you need to have change within the system. And the old system before Neighborhood Policing was resident may call me, I'd have to call the chief, we'd have to go through that whole rigmarole. And that's not very effective. It's not very effective for the chief. It's not, it's just not very effective. This system, this program, gave people in the community a point person to call when they had problems. And that's a very, in my opinion, a very efficient system as far as being able to deal with problems within the community. And the list of things that community policing did is long and vast. I think some other Aldermen up here may mention that. So it's our charge up here to try to find a way to fund it. I don't have any answers for you right now, tonight. But we're gonna have to find a way, we're gonna have to look at the cost of it, the cost of other things, and see how we can try to make it work. I don't want it to go away. I think it's too valuable for, for the whole community. We've got to try to find a way. The other thing is it might take some bending on our Patrolmen's Union. If they really think it's that important, they might have to have a little flexibility on how they want things done. There's gotta be flexibility for everybody. Because at the end of the day, both them and us work for you. And we have to understand that and remember that. We represent the people, they work for the people. We've got to try to do what's best for all the people, and I think this is what's best for all the people. So that's gonna be our charge up here, is for us nine, and the Mayor, excuse me, and the Chief, which I have full confidence in, to find a way to make this work. So that's gonna be our charge. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
One of the young ladies in the audience mentioned the video, Fox News in Phoenix. It was Maricopa County Sheriff's Department. They showed the local activist slash pastor marching in a large group of people after an incident, that they wanted the officer's badge, they wanted his gun, and they wanted his job. So what they did was they offered this pastor the opportunity to participate in some use-of-force scenarios. And it was very enlightening. Probably if you type in the search words, Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, use-of-force scenario, you might get on a browser page that, you can watch the video. And I, I have to commend the pastor. He was very honest after, and he admitted he didn't realize how difficult it is to be a police officer. Matter of fact, he was issued an airsoft gun, and he was presented with three scenarios. One of them was a gentleman looking like he was gonna break into a car, and he asked him, "You have your keys? You lose your keys?" He let the guy walk around the back of the van, and had his guard down. The guy came from behind the van, shot him three times. That was the end of him, and then he came upon a fight, two people fighting, and he was starting to question what was going on. The big guy got up and goes, "None of your business," and keeps walking towards him and walking towards him, and this pastor's just moving backwards, backwards. Finally, he pulled his gun out and he shot the guy three times in the chest, and even said to the, the reporter afterwards, he goes, "Well, he got in that zone, that my comfort zone, and what, what was I supposed to do? He wouldn't stop." Exactly. You know, if, right or wrong, you know, if you get pulled over by the police or a policeman questions you, yes sir, no sir. You know, it, it's very simple. Answer the questions and move on in life. You know, there's, it seemed to be people that just don't know how to behave, and I, and I think that's our biggest problem. I, I think we need to push for more evictions in this community, for chronic lawbreakers. We have over 50% rental property now. I don't think it would be too hard. That's what I try to do, when I can find out who's who. And I would like to make a suggestion to the Neighborhood Watch people, and everybody that lives in Waukegan and the neighborhood. You know, people used to lift their shades and open their blinds, open their curtains every morning when they arose. I go through neighborhood after neighborhood, and I look, everybody has their shades pulled down, summertime, air conditioners are going, might have a TV on. You know, if you're, i- i- if a burglar's watching a house, very easy, you might be home, your side windows, they walk right up the driveway, back door of your neighbor's house, kick the door in. You know, if you would've just had, maybe your, your shades pulled up, maybe that person might, with the glare, they can't see what's going on inside the house. You know, it might even think twice about breaking in the house, but most of the, most of the homes in this community, people don't even let the sunlight in every day. Open up your shades. I don't think they choose a house to break into, "Well, okay, the shades are open. Let me see what kinda good stuff they have in here." I don't think it quite works that way, but I think it's a deterrent to a certain degree if everyone would let a little sunshine into their home. So these people... that person might, with the glare, they can't see what's going on inside the house. You know, it might even think twice about breaking in the house, but most of the homes in this community, people don't even let the sunlight in every day. Open up your shades. I don't think they choose a house to break into, well, okay, the shades are open, let me see what kind of good stuff they have in here. I don't think it quite works that way, but I think it's a deterrent to a certain degree if everyone would let a little sunshine into their home. So these people, I'm exactly sure if someone's inside the house watching them walk up the driveway to go up in their neighbor's back door. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. I would like to just personally thank Commander Florip, Lieutenant Corey Kelly, and Officer Kelly Gordon, and Officer Roscoe, he was the Fifth Ward Policing Officer before, and the impact that they made on my ward has been stated, uh, a lot from some of the owners over on Walnut Street and the residents in the Fifth Ward, the difference that this policing unit has made. They have worked diligently with all the residents that came out to the Neighborhood Watch meetings, and as this group over here on Walnut Street, Linden and Edwards, I too have seen in the last 12 years, the difference between 12 years and just four years ago since this unit went into action. And I too would hate to see it completely go away. I understand the mayor, uh, we're just going to take it in a little different direction, but as Alderman Moiseo stated, it is our charge here to see how we can make this work, and even if it's not working the same way we have it now, we get it to work better than we have it working now. So that's what I'm going to be looking for, because I do care as the officers, policing officers that live in this city, I do care about the city of Waukegan, and I deeply care about the Fifth Ward residents that elected me to speak on their behalf and to represent them. I'm going to do whatever I can to help them, because I live in the city of Waukegan, and I want those officers there helping to protect my home and my family's home that are here in the city of Waukegan. So our charge is to see what we can do to make this thing work and work better. That's all.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you all for coming out and voicing your concerns, that's really important, and I'm sure the aldermen want to hear them. I want to talk a little bit about, snow's coming again, and I'm really amazed at how many people don't shovel their sidewalk. It's your obligation to shovel the sidewalk. At one time, the city had these snowplows, sidewalk plows would go down and do it. That program ended many, many years ago, but I think as, especially the rental units, I think the city needs to somehow make an ordinance or enforce shovel in the sidewalks. It just, it's hard for me to believe how many times it's not done, how often it's not done. Then Neighborhood Watch, I, that's a great, great program, I agree, but what's so great about it, and you can do this partially on your own also, is get to know your neighbor. It's surprisingly, in some blocks, they don't know who lives two houses away, and that's one thing that Neighborhood Watch has done, it's brought these people in together, I look at the gal on Atlantic, they're in a red shirt, she brought all the neighbors in and has a little community garden in the front yard for all the neighbors to work on, and it's done a lot for the neighborhood, but she needs to move that to the backyard, there's more sun back there, I'm a gardener. We just need, as a community, to come together and know each other. I know Donna on Fourth Street, wow, they've brought that community together, thanks to Alvin, but it took an effort, it took an effort to bring it together, and people want that, they really enjoy getting to know their neighbor, and it takes a spark to do it. It takes a spark to get people involved, and I hope, listening tonight, that more people will be involved, and we don't have to have always, once you get it going, once you get it going, I don't think you need an officer there every time, we could have somebody from code enforcement come one time, maybe the building commissioner come another time, and spread it out a little bit, but to me, knowing your neighbor and looking out for your neighbor is very, very important, and I think our community is headed that way, and I think Neighborhood Watch helped that get going a little better. So in the future, yes, I hope our budget comes better, the mayor has to make some tough decisions sometimes. We don't have a money tree that grows in City Hall, it doesn't work that way, and the other problem is our assessed valuation is going down pretty dramatically, and I heard one, well, we've got to get it going, well, it's starting to turn around a little bit. Sales of homes are starting to come back up again, so I would hope our assessed valuation will be turning around too. But to run a city of this size, where do you cut? Nobody wants to cut, so you have to make some hard decisions sometimes, but you as citizens, you can help make that decision by looking out for your neighbor, and I say that sincerely. And the other one I want to commentate was, talk about was our animal shelter. What a good job those gals, gals out there, what a good job those gals do out there. I mean, you talk about animals being treated humanely and looking out for them and trying to find them homes, I mean, Susan just does a wonderful job with those poor little animals. In fact, I adopted one from out there, sometime ago, oh, what a buddy. I mean, they almost know when you adopt them, they almost know that you saved them, because they hug you and everything else, they come up, better not nestle, I can hear, they snuggle right into you, and it's amazing how great they can be when you adopt a pet, so I would encourage you, if you're looking for a nice pet, give Susan a call out there, she'll help you find one. With that, thank you very much, Your Honor.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I first learned about the disbanding of the Neighborhood Police Unit, excuse me, on January 8th, after making an inquiry about a separate high-profile case in the city. The mayor did respond to all the aldermen, informed us that he had made a decision to disband this unit approximately one week prior. I found this news quite unsettling, as this unit is well-received throughout the community, and the list of their accomplishments grows with each passing year. It shocked me that this unit would be dissolved while the entire country is buzzing about community policing in the wake of the unfortunate events in Ferguson and Staten Island. In fact, on December 18th, President Obama signed an executive order establishing the Task Force on 21st Century Policing to improve community policing. Per the White House website, the task force will examine how to strengthen public trust and foster strong relationships between local law enforcement and the communities that they protect, while also promoting effective crime reduction. This is exactly what our Neighborhood Policing Unit has been successfully doing since former Chief Greathouse brought it back to Waukegan in 2011. I believe consistency and longevity of this program are the key to the success of this unit. The mayor explains that dissolving this unit is about needing more officers on the patrol shifts in order to control overtime spending. Just today, for the first time, the council was given data regarding overtime payroll in the Waukegan Police Department, and I agree, almost a million dollars in overtime pay is excessive. I also understand that by union contract, we have to comply with minimum staffing levels on the patrol unit, and quite often, we come up short with anywhere from six to 12 officers on disability at the same time. But my question is this, what has been done to address this problem prior to now? Are we coordinating schedules throughout the department and the various units? There's always an ebb and flow to the amount of work in specialized units, why haven't we used officers from these units to cover the higher backs? I know since September of this year, and upon suggestion of the supervisor of the Neighborhood Policing Unit, our neighborhood officers have covered, I think somewhere around 950 hours of overtime. While that is just a drop in the bucket, well, I'm sorry, while that is just a drop in the million-dollar bucket, it proves there are solutions for chipping away the overtime burden. I've also learned that we hire back, read overtime, detectives every weekend to perform bond court duties at the tune of 16 overtime hours per week, which is another 832 hours of overtime each year. Our patrol officers handle this duty Monday through Friday. Why are we hiring back and paying overtime on the weekends? There very well may be valid explanations to these questions, but unfortunately, the overtime dilemma hasn't been presented to the council prior to the announcement that NPU is being dissolved. And today was the first time we've seen any numbers. We did receive a memo from finance today, breaking down overtime in the police department. The mayor has kept true to his word and has hired eight to 12 officers since he took office. I'm told that five of these new officers will be completing the academy in February and joining the patrol unit. I also have to assume that the officers currently on leave will eventually return to patrol. I want to read to you, if you bear with me, a list I've compiled about the Neighborhood Policing Unit and what they actually do in our city. It goes way beyond Neighborhood Watch, although obviously Neighborhood Watch is a very important function of the Neighborhood Policing Unit. They manage Neighborhood Watch, the Citizens Police Academy, sex offender verification. Did you know on Halloween, the Neighborhood Policing Unit, all the officers go to their ward and go to the houses of all the registered sex offenders and make sure they're not giving out candy? Animal control. Animal control, they do a great job out there as Rife, but in the last year or so, that unit has really, the animal control has really become professionalized. Commander Florip and Lieutenant Kelly and all the neighborhood officers went into animal control, cleaned it up, professionalized that whole building. National night out event, and then they do landlord trading, including helping landlords with background checks and premise security consultations. Someone mentioned earlier Harbor Lakes, with Officer Laney Newman and Lieutenant Corey Kelly and our city attorney, Anlin, we met with the management from Harbor Lakes over several months after receiving a rash of police calls in that, you know, huge, thousands of apartments there. And they took, our officers went out there and made security recommendations, lighting, locks, all the, hiring the security patrol, totally changed that neighborhood, totally changed. They've also done work with Julian Towers, Woodland Village. They do special details, beach patrols, bicycle patrols, walking patrols. Dennis C. Street, we have a lot, we have panhandlers, we have this million-dollar theater, we want people to come to our community. We need people on the street, we need police officers on the street to help us with the panhandlers, prostitution details, alcohol enforcement for underage sales, problematic rental properties, nuisance abatement for our businesses. On top of all that, our Neighborhood Police Unit has volunteered more than 200 hours in the year 2014, with their food drive, First Ward alley cleanup, Second Ward dumping on Willow, Fifth Ward landlord cleanup, beach cleanup, monthly tutoring at the Topbox Food Sales at Carmen Buckner, reading in our schools, Girl Scouts, YWCA Tech Girls, nursing home, women's group. That's all volunteer. These people are vested in our community, and it shows in their work ethic. I'm deeply saddened and concerned that the unit is going to be dissolved when they're the only proactive and actually engaged in crime prevention as opposed to reactionary, I'm sorry, as opposed to reactionary policing. The work that they do is proactive, it actually is crime prevention. We don't have a lot of resources for crime prevention anymore with the way the budgets are. Trust between law enforcement agencies and the people they protect and serve is essential to the stability of our community, the integrity of our criminal justice system, and the safe and effective delivery of policing services. I hope that we can reconsider this decision, and that's all I have.
Alderman Velco.
We've heard many comments tonight, this evening, on the disbanding of the Community Policing Unit. All pro for the Community Policing Unit, all justifiable, but here mine is an ex-commander of the police department who headed the Community Services Division, which encompassed community policing, and is an alderman and chairman of the Finance Committee. As Finance Chair, I and co-chair Alderman Newsom meet quarterly with the mayor, the Finance Director, the chiefs of both the police and fire departments, and the Public Works Director. One of the topics continually brought up by the Finance Director is overtime. At my first meeting, Director Smilkowski said that every year, the overtime budgets exceed estimates, and we should find ways of curbing the overtime. Now, the Finance Director is extremely good at what she does, but I threw my two cents in anyway, and what I said was, and what everyone should know is, that when a homicide or other heinous crimes occur, detectives and evidence techs from the major crime scene unit must be called in. Overtime. When a vehicle accident occurs involving death or serious injury, in which death may occur, the major accident unit must be called in and respond. Overtime. When patrol shift supervisors see that their shift is going to run short, they must hire back due to minimum staffing in the patrolman's contract. More overtime. The fire department has been keeping a close eye on overtime, but if a major fire or a major hazardous incident occurs, personnel must be called in. And what can we say about the overtime at Public Works? Last year, almost every weekend, it snowed and personnel had to be called in. It snowed so much that the city almost ran out of salt. This year, the first big snow came on the weekend and the drivers had to respond. After almost every major snowfall, aldermen relate that the Waukegan streets are the best in the county. When a water main breaks after hours in front of your home or on your street, you as a citizen report it. You want it fixed. You don't want to hear excuses from the city when the water is gushing down the street or immediately freezing in inclement weather. But all this comes at a price. Our fiscal budget last year showed a $1.5 million deficit. This year, we were presented with a $1.2 million shortfall. After the special meeting where the aldermen and the public heard the figures, the mayor pledged to find ways to cut costs and charged his department heads to work with him. If I remember correctly, after the article of the open meeting appeared in the New Sun, one citizen's comment at the end of the article was something on the order, where are you going to find that kind of money? A few days later, there was an editorial that in essence admired the mayor for his thinking and wished him luck. So here we are. Last month, three patrol officers quit. There are 10 officers on duty injury or light duty. As I said before, per the patrolman's contract with the city, there must be a certain amount of officers working a shift, so when that shift is short, personnel must be hired back. I'm sure the consideration of disbanding the unit occurred after serious thought by the chief and the mayor. Every alderman sitting on this dais, excuse me, every alderman sitting on this dais has previously spoken out for fiscal responsibility. It's hard sometimes to lose something that you admire and the individuals that you like and respect, but sometimes hard and unpopular decisions have to be made for the betterment of the financial situation of the city. And this decision is not unprecedented. It is not the first time that the Community Policing Unit has been disbanded. During my command at the Community Services, the unit was disbanded and then brought back a couple of years later. Is this an option? I'm sure the chief is going to give it some serious thought to the idea once manpower issues are hopefully resolved, and I'm hopeful the chief Wallace and the patrol commander will meet with his supervisors and try and put those transferred officers in their respective beats with their old wards, essentially doing community policing plus the Neighborhood Watch program on the shift where it all began. Overtime for personnel for the investigation of homicides, serious crimes, fires, inclement weather, water main breaks can't be budgeted for. Here, the department has taken the step to reel in overtime and attempt to keep costs more in line with the budget. These eight officers and two supervisors will fill the gaps left by the necessity to hire back on the four shifts in the patrol division due to those officers that have quit and those officers that are out on duty injury. In closing, I would like to say that I know every one of these officers that work, almost all of them are here this evening, and that I personally, that I know these officers personally, and I'm sure that they will continue to do their duties to the best of their ability helping the ward residents. The second thing I have this evening is another article in Talk of the County. The second thing I have this evening is another article in Talk of the County last week. I got a call from a couple of my constituents talking about, "What the heck did we do implementing a Waukegan cellphone tax?" And I said, "What are you talking about? We never did that." Well, yes, you did, because it's in Talk of the County, which you can believe everything that's in there. So I pulled it up, and it's titled in Talk of the County, it's titled "Another Tax." I can't believe this is happening again. I was shocked when I saw another Waukegan tax on our cellphones. Shame on Mayor Motley and the aldermen. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that is bogus, it's a lie. If you look at your bill, because I looked at mine, I went back six months, there's no increase in any tax. What you have on your cellphone bill is labeled "Waukegan MTT tax." And what that is, is the Waukegan municipal telephonic, telecommunications tax. This tax was instituted by the city in 1993, and it hasn't gone up. So please, if you are here, if you're listening to this at home, or you're one of the people that call in any other times, in fact, Talk of the County, since my last thing about another issue, they actually have something at the top of their column now that says, "If you disagree with anything like this, or if it's misinformation, call us at this number." Well, I'm here to tell you, this is misinformation. If you have something that's bothering you, call your alderman. If you don't like your alderman, you can't get along with your alderman, call me. If it's a financial matter, being chair of the Finance Committee, call me and I will get a straight answer. You may not like it, but you're going to get a straight answer. So your Waukegan cellphone tax is not going up. I know we had talked about it here, but we can't do it because it's against state law. So if you read that article, it's wrong. The last thing that I want to talk about is, I got a call Thursday or Friday from one of my good friends, and he says, "Bill," he says, "Jerry Cook, who we honored here probably a month and a half or two months ago for his contributions downtown for Scoop the Loop and the other functions, is throwing something called Waukegan After Hours or something down at the second floor of the Greentown Tavern." So he says, "You're doing anything? They're gonna have a DJ. Why don't you come up over there?" Okay? So my lovely wife, and Mr. and Mrs. Begay, and Mo and Mary were here, I think they've gone. I go over there, and he says, "Bill, you probably won't know too many people because back in the late 50s, early 60s, and in the early 70s, I guess the YMCA down here, the old YMCA, had what was called a Waukegan Night Out, and prior to Scoop the Loop or after Scoop the Loop or whatever, they would have sock hops over here." So I went to this function, went up on the second floor, paid a dollar to get in, which encompassed a raffle ticket, paid a couple of bucks, three or four dollars to the DJ, had some drinks, met people from all over. Jerry Cook does a fantastic job. This is about the third time that he's done it. He wants to get something together for the older folk. There was nobody 20, there was nobody 25. It was all people our age that was there. So, for a lousy dollar, the second Saturday of every month, they're gonna have a function there called Waukegan Hangout. Did I say night out? That's for my community policing days. Waukegan Hangout. So we had people from Waukegan High School, we had people from Carmo, we had people from high schools in the city of Chicago, we had people from Gray's Lake, we had people, Warren High School. So if you want to reminisce a little bit, it was all real late, '59, '60 music, and then in the 60s and in the 70s up to disco. Meet with the people, it was really a gas, it really was. So my hat's off to Jerry Cook. If you guys want to go there, it's above the Greentown Tavern, you're more than welcome. That's all I have.
Alderman Vera?
I'll be short and brief. I understand, I had my calls too from my ninth ward residents in terms of the Neighborhood Watch program. I too agree with everyone that came tonight, that that program is very important, no question about it. And I also understand, you know, why, you know, the mayor made this decision, which is an administrative decision, and I understand the facts that were presented and why you made this decision. However, I would also like to see, like all us aldermen up here, that this program continue in the future. Can we make improvements on it? Absolutely. Maybe right now, and I, one of the ladies that came up here, they were concerned that, you know, the dialogue, the communication is going to be missing. You know, well, maybe during this process, during these times, we can create a citywide, I mean, we have these ad hoc committees, right? You have the Planning and Zoning Commission. Why can't we have a Neighborhood Watch Committee so these issues can still be discussed? I mean, there's nine wards, nine captains, that's just a suggestion. You know, we have nine captains, nine wards. This committee could be, that could meet here to discuss some of the, you know, issues in the ward. You know, and we can still keep that dialogue going and not, you know, worry about, you know, that part of the communication. You know, that's something that we can, you know, hopefully we can consider, mayor. It's not a bad idea. This is the people's City Hall, so they have a place to meet and continue that dialogue. So that's my suggestion. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's been said that it's lonely at the top, and I can tell you, it certainly is lonely at the top. I made some decisions during my career that have been devastating to me personally. I've lost a lot of friends. When I took away the retirement benefits and the insurance benefits from the police and fire, it saved the city $1.2 million, I lost a lot of friends. My wife, I went home Friday, and my wife was crying. I said, "What's the problem, Carol?" She said, "We can't go to a wedding because if we go, several police officers will not attend." I've known the father of this woman for 40 years. He's been a great friend of mine, his wife's been a great friend of ours. Because of this decision that I've made, my wife was devastated. It has an impact on me personally, professionally, but I can tell you this: The five officers, or nine officers that we're talking about, that are coming back on the road, probably won't. Every one of them is seeking workman's comp disability, so they want to leave. They don't want to be here anymore. They want to get their retirement and walk away from the police department. So at the very least, they will be here for nine months before they leave. Second of all, the five new officers coming on the shift, that will allow us to put three officers in the traffic division and two more officers in the detective division. The eight officers will be shifted to the shifts, to broaden the shifts. As you well know, the union has minimum staffing levels that we have to apply, we have to adhere to. We have to have X amount of men per shift. We don't have that. It's causing confusion with us. We're in negotiation with the union, we've been there for, as you well know, almost three years now. I don't see an end to it. I see it going to arbitration and being ruled on in 2017. I don't see an end to that dispute. Not my fault, I'm not taking credit for it. We did resolve it twice, and the union chose not to accept the contract issues. So I'm not taking any responsibility for that. The sex offender registration will remain, it will be in the Detective Bureau now. The officer at the Housing Authority will stay there. The two command personnel will go on the midnight shift. And I can assure you, I know the importance of community policing. I was one. Very proud to have started the Officer on the Program and worked five years in community policing. It's a great job. The people who are there are wonderful people, they're respected police officers, they live in the city, they're committed to the city. This is not about them, this is a matter for me of my obligation and responsibility as mayor to make sure that we balance the police budget. The police budget is, every year, at least a million dollars over. It causes me concerns and issues, I'm trying to correct it, and hopefully I will. Will the community policing office come back? I can guarantee you this, and God will be my witness, once I balance these budgets and once we get back on track, I'll guarantee you, it will be back. And like Officer Velco said, who was a commander in that division, once we can afford it again, it will come back. But now, I can't afford it. I have to utilize these officers to reduce the overtime expenditures on the police department. And that being said, if anyone would like to talk to me about this, please, you're welcome. I'll stay here and talk to you, all you need to talk to me. That being said, a motion to adjourn by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moisey, all is a favor.
Aye.
opposed. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.